Hey, Janice. So Bill Lamond? Is he traveling?
Is that the tall one? He told you he wasn't going to be here?
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe he retired. On the air. I guess. We're good.
All right, thank you. I'd like to call to order tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Please join us and with the pledge by Commissioner Erickson and the prayer by Commissioner Walker.
Prayer first.
Prayer first.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all we do here is for the glory of you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please announce tonight's meeting's procedures?
Yes, I would like to begin by saying if you are here to speak, we would like you to sign up on a sheet on the back table. Each item has a sheet and find the right one and put your name on it, please. When your name is called, please come to the podium. We ask that you address your comments to the Planning Commission, not the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. Of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker stated points you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes, and we ask that you please respect the time limit.
Thank you very much. Mr. Starter, would you please call the roll?
Ramick. Sharma. Erickson.
Present.
Stafford.
Present.
Scott. Gurkey.
Present.
Greenway. Lamond. Davis.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Val.
Present.
Hobby.
Present, thank you very much. May I have a motion and a second to approve last month's meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this time, I believe Commissioner Gurkey, you're going to recuse yourself for the consent agenda approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Approval for the agenda tonight, item number two? Is that correct?
Yes.
Needs to be deferred to the October 12th, 2023 meeting. May I have a motion and a second to amend tonight's consent agenda? Or just agenda?
Yes.
I move that we change the consent agenda on this month's meeting and move item two to next month.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda. The first matter of business is our consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve? Sorry, we jumped that one. Director Selman, please present the consent agenda.
Thank you. This is item number PS 23138, a preliminary plat and development plan application for a six-lot residential commercial subdivision to be known as Richardson Hot Springs subdivision. The recommendation is for approval with 11 conditions. I'll read those conditions into the record. Recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat and development plan for Richardson Hot Springs subdivision as submitted with the following conditions: Because the submittal demonstrates compliance with Hot Springs Code Section 16446 and the objectives of the zoning code are accomplished. Number one. All construction and construction activities are to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and development plans. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two. A final subdivision bill of assurance shall be provided to and approved by the Planning Department prior to execution of the final subdivision plat. A copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the Planning Department after recreditation. Number three. Full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations. Number four. The Planning Director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat listing these conditions of approval and the development plan. Number five. No additional permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16444, has been approved by the Planning Director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the Planning Department office. Number six. Approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until September 14, 2025. Prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. Number seven. A spare wastewater pump must be supplied to the city. Number eight. Installation of interior sidewalks on lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 are deferred until such time as each lot develops in accordance with Hot Springs Code, Section 16476H. Number nine. Proposed non-residential lot development will trigger a traffic study requirement to assess impacts if the city engineer so determines. Public improvements necessary to mitigate impacts will be the responsibility of the lot owner and/or developer and be a prerequisite of building permit issuance. Number 10. Depending on specific future development proposals, Article 2 Site Plan Review Application Review may be required by Planning Commission prior to construction on lots within this development. And number 11. Property owner of Lot 3 shall have perpetual maintenance responsibility of the regional detention facility.
Thank you very much, Director. At this time, Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll? And again, it is a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I think we need a motion to approve.
Yes.
Did we do that?
That's what I just was saying.
Okay.
So, please, at this time, can we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much.
And a roll call.
And now we need our roll call.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey? Oh, sorry. Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Val?
Approved.
And Hobby?
Approved, thank you very much.
Okay.
The next item on tonight's agenda is old business. Director Selman, will you please introduce the next item?
Thank you. The next item is miscellaneous application 23108, an infrastructure bond completion extension request to complete required paving of the secondary emergency access road in the cottages at Bay Shore Development.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number three? So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number three?
Yes, thank you. Applicant and owner, Datsun Incorporated, seeks 12 months' extension to complete secondary access paving for the cottages at Bay Shore Cove subdivision Phase 1 as required by their approved preliminary plat, final plat, and surety agreement for this development. The development is located on Clearwater Cove, off Clearwater Court and Bay Shore Cove, north of Bay Shore Cove, HPR. The subject property is located in Board of Directors District Number 6. There has been previous action on this item. The request to extend the time to complete the improvement of the secondary access road. We have had an irrevocable letter of credit from Southern Bancorp and replacement letters have been provided in, first moment was in 2020, replacement letters were in 21, October of 21, July 30 of 22, and July 1 of 23. And Planning Commission approved the request to pave the secondary access originally by August of 2021 and to complete the required Phase 2 street infrastructure extension to October 2021 at their meeting in October of 2020. And subsequent requests were also approved, the most recent one being August 11 of 2022. On the applicant notes, they have only eight lots remaining to complete this development and believe they will have this completed within the next one to two years. Finding is that the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16479, for extension are met. The request was submitted prior to the date of default of the previous letter of credit for this project. The City of Hot Springs Engineering Department reviewed the completion estimates and found them acceptable. The applicant provides written justification for extension. As noted, we have only eight lots remaining to complete the development and feel they will have this completed in the next one to two years. They have provided a replacement irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $27,000, which will be valid until July 1, 2023. Recommendation is to approve the application to extend the completion deadline for cottages at Bay Shore Cove, paving of the secondary access to July 1, 2024, secured by a $27,000 irrevocable letter of credit with the following two conditions. Number one, provide ongoing dust and particulate mitigation until the road is improved and construction is complete to prevent dust and debris impacting the surrounding neighborhood. And number two, compliance with all previous conditions of approval.
Thank you very much. Now will the applicant please come forward, state your name, your address, make sure you speak clearly into the microphone, and do you have anything to add?
David Hall, developer for Datsun Inc., Cottage of the Bay Shore. We were notified of the dust issue within the last 30 days and we hired Jenkins, who is also our stormwater supervisor, to bring water trucks. They've had multiple water trucks over the last 30 days and will continue to bring water trucks over there to mitigate the issue of dust.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anybody signed up to speak? Public portion of this application is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just wondering, as far as ongoing dust mitigation, how do we know that's ongoing? I mean, I appreciate the fact that that's been done, but at least temporarily, but...
Typically, we hear from the neighbors if there is a problem and immediately notify the developer.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Starter, at this time, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve of item number three?
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is new business. Director Selman, will you please introduce the next item?
Thank you. This item is conditional use 23-123, an application for the addition of nine units to an existing developed site located at 349 Chapel Hill Road.
Thank you very much, Director Selman. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number four? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number four?
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Brad Bird, representing property owner, DMT Properties. He is seeking conditional use and large-scale development approvals to construct nine new detached freestanding units to an existing residential seven-building with 16 dwelling units long-term rental complex on nearly three acres at 349 Chapel Hill Road. This would be for a total of 25 dwelling units if approved. Subject property is Zoned RL Lake Residential. Has a future land use classification of residential low and is located in Board of Directors District Number 4. Excuse me. Subject property on Chapel Hill Road contains approximately 2.92 acres. Hot Springs Code mandates a minimum parcel size of two acres for multifamily units and this subject property does meet that requirement. Surrounding property zoning in the area is to the west, Lake Area Residential. Also to the south, the north, and the east. Surrounding land uses are, on the north, south, east, and west, single-family residential. Lake Hamilton is also adjacent to this property. DMT Properties owns and operates a long-term rental property at 349 Chapel Hill and they would like to add nine additional units. The nine units will all be similar in matching the existing architecture, fit and finish of the existing buildings. Each new unit will be a 20-by-30 space with asphalt parking spaces along with additional landscaping that complements the neighborhood. This project will have an approximate density of 8.5 units per acre, thus requiring conditional use consideration. Conditional use for up to 12 units per acre is possible in the RL Zone District. This project is also considered a large-scale development due to its multi-building design per Hot Springs Code, thus requiring a large-scale development site plan to be considered as well. The site and development plans illustrate the required development improvements such as access, utilities, fire protection, paved parking, screening, and landscaping. The proposed long-term rental use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated in a way so as to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the public. Advancing housing availability and all development standards are met. The proposed expansion of an existing use is compatible with and will not adversely affect other nearby properties. The existing parcel development is a mix of residential types, single-family, duplex, triplex, and fourplex, and the nine units proposed to be added all will be single. Hot Springs Code, Section 162152, Table of Permitted Uses, lists dwelling multifamily up to 12 units per acre as a conditional use and the 8.5 units per acre, which would result with this proposal, meets that requirement. The proposed expansion of the existing use conforms to the RL development standards and will provide needed additional housing. The site plan demonstrates 18 new parking spaces total, 10 spaces located along the existing drive, and five double-space pads at the new proposed units on the west side of the property. The proposed vehicular access to the parking lot is located from Chapel Hill Road. Chapel Hill, a local street, has a narrow right-of-way. Nine 600-square-foot single-family units are not projected to generate a significant increase in vehicle trip generation. Off-street parking is provided. The project's site and development plans demonstrate a well-designed project with parking and landscaping that meets the code requirements. This parking project should not produce dust, odor, glare, or excessive use, excessive noise, as off-street parking and existing drives are paved. The project landscape plan is on the development plan sheet in your packet and fully illustrates that the requirements of the code are met. The finding is that the proposed nine-unit addition to an existing development in an RL Lake Area Residential Zone District requires both conditional use and large-scale development site plan consideration. The conditional use and large-scale development site plan application submission requirements have been met. No variances or waivers are requested. The submitted documents successfully demonstrate that all elements of review comply and that with the conditions, the project can be implemented. The recommendation is to approve the conditional use and large-scale development site plan applications for 349 Chapel Hill Road expansion project, subject to nine conditions, because when these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16272 and Section 16420. I will read the conditions into the record. Number one. The development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of buildings, access drive, parking, and landscaping. Number two. All construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three. Required permits and/or approvals shall be in hand for the City of Hot Springs Stormwater, Utilities, Engineering, Public Works, and Building Departments prior to any work beginning. Number four. Engineering requirements. A, a driveway apron must meet Hot Springs Code, Section 151032J, and is required to be concrete. B, driveway apron radius to back of curb must meet Hot Springs Code, Section 151032C, and it is required to be 10 feet. Five. Utilities requirements. A, backflow preventer is required on each water service line. And B, the applicant must provide standard details of the two horsepower duplex grinder-pump station on plans before or at building permit application. Number six. Fire department requirements are that existing driveways must be widened to a 20-foot minimum width. Number seven. Public works requirements. A, hay waddles cannot be used in high sediment areas and wire-back silt fencing must be used instead. B, all elevation certificates must be corrected. Eight. A minimum of one handicap-accessible parking space shall be designated with an eye-level sign and painted decal. Should an individual tenant require accommodation, that space shall be made convenient to that person. And number nine. The approved large-scale development site plan applications shall be effective for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Prior to that expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. Planning Commission approval of any project that has not fully secured all required permits within the period set forth shall be null and void. This approval will be effective until September 14, 2024.
Thank you very much, Director. May the applicant please come forward, state your name and address, and if you have anything that you would like to add to the record, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Daniel Brown and I am the owner of DMT Properties, 218 Fourth Street, here in Hot Springs. So just to give you just a brief overview of this project, in September of 2020, I had purchased a home on Camelot Point and we had completely renovated it. It was a short-term rental, but we were there, you know, two, three, four days a week, were there quite often. Well, we had stayed the first weekend there, Labor Day weekend, and on that weekend, just across the cove on the property that we're talking here on Chapel Hill, there were two shootings. The police were there six times during those three days. And I was sick to my stomach because here we've got this beautiful home in a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood and yet there was a very undesirable three acres right next to... to me. So I won't go through all the details. We ended up purchasing that three acres. There were seven structures on the property. Four of them were vacant, had not been lived in in years. There were multiple city violations, code violations. So we went to work, and over the next about nine months, we cleaned, worked, hired excavators, came in and cleaned the entire property up. The neighborhood had actually, I found this out after I purchased it, the neighborhood had actually formed an LLC and started collecting money from the neighbors to hire attorneys to go after the current situation. And eight months after we had purchased this property on Chapel Hill, and we had cleaned everything up, we got rid of all the problems, and the neighborhood held a block party. There were 86 people in attendance to say thank you for cleaning the neighborhood up. And this is a neighborhood that, even though I don't live there, I'm there every single day, except maybe Saturday or Sunday, and a lot of times I'm there then as well. My eight-year-old boy, my 10-year-old boy, they play there. This was very important to me, to clean, and really, if you go down the Chapel Hill Road and then into Camelot Point, it was the only blemish on the whole area. It's a beautiful area, except for this three acres. So as you can see, we've cleaned it up. They're all long-term rentals. They're, and of course, as you've just heard in the report, we could put up to 12 units per acre. We're only going for eight and a half units. I don't want to overcrowd it. I was worried, again, as someday the Camelot home is, if things go as planned, will be my retirement home. That's where I plan on living. So obviously, long-term is very, very important to me. So I was worried about traffic flow. I was worried about parking. If you read the city's report, as you just heard, the city does not think that the traffic flow will be affected. All street, all parking is off-street parking. We're actually widening Chapel Hill on that entire portion in front of my land. We're widening the Chapel Hill Road. And one of the biggest things that we're excited about is the nine new units for Hot Springs. Hot Springs is growing. We need good housing. And that's one of the big, huge areas that we just get calls all the time for good-quality housing, and there seems to be such a shortage of it. And this would put nine new families in a beautiful neighborhood, a wonderful neighborhood that we love dearly, that we plan on being long-term. And so that's what we're excited about, is being able to let nine more people put, you know, get to call Chapel Hill, the Camelot Point, the Chapel Hill neighborhood their home. And that's what we just think is really neat. Yes, we could put more, but we don't want to overcrowd the area. We want it to keep, to keep it the residential neighborhood that it is, and so that's our goal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this matter? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll call you in order of how you sign up on the sheets. You will have three minutes to speak. Please let us know your name, your address, speak clearly into the microphone, and direct your questions to the Planning Commission. Michael, can't say the last name.
Michelle Paskovich.
Okay, sorry. My apologies.
My name is Michelle Paskovich. My husband and I bought property, a house, in 1997 on Camelot Point. That's 26 years ago. And we bought the property because it was quiet, it was peaceful. We did not choose to live next door to apartments or condominiums or rental properties. If we had, we would have moved there, but we didn't. I oppose the addition of the nine units for the following reasons. Number one, our current electrical grid up there is really, really poor. So if a storm hits, it wipes all the electricity out, unless you're fortunate enough to have a generator. More houses would compound this, this problem, until it's corrected. We're going to have issues with trash disposal, extra parking. Rental property always lowers the value of the property in the neighborhood. I would like to know what his definition is of long-term. Is this 30-day, 60-day, 90-day? Do these require deposits? I don't know. The structures, we don't know what they look like. Are they prefabricated homes? Are they put on slabs? It says that they're 30 feet by 20 feet. It would be nice to see some photographs, some architectural drawings, exactly what these huts look like. I oppose this very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Russell Cooper.
Good evening. My name's Russell Cooper. I live at 117 Brant Point. My family, my grandfather purchased that property when the river was dammed up and when the lake was formed. So my family, my grandfather, my father, and now I live there, have been there since the lake was built. And when Chapel Hill Road was just a dirt road that went out there to our property. Hideaway Harbor was put in there when I was a boy, and I realized that y'all didn't have anything to do with the RL designation of the zoning out there or whatnot. But it's the only multiple-family unit thing on the entire street. Chapel Hill Road's 6/10ths of a mile long, then a couple other tenths of a mile down Brant Point and Camelot Point. I appreciate what Mr. Brown did. You know, he has cleaned the area up. I don't mean to, but it was the Hot Springs Police that got the bad folks out of there a couple of years ago. I just, I can't see putting nine units in this piece of property. Prior, it had little Hideaway Harbor down there. It was eight units in a little, small area. And then he's purchased some single-family homes. There were some cabins that have been there for a long time. A lot of this was grandfathered in, I feel like, 50 years ago, when Hideaway Harbor was, was built. And, you know, I'm concerned about, if you put these little prefabricated 20 by 30 units in there, where does the, when a family moves in there, where do the bicycles go? Where does the, you know, where does all the other stuff go? You just sit outside the little, the little bungalow and in view of everything? Chapel Hill sits up high, and it looks down into all this. And when you drive by, you know, there's going to be extra jet skis out there, extra motorcycles, extra boats, because it is on the lake. This is all going to be in that parking area, and I'm just not so sure that this is going to be a particularly attractive addition to the situation it is now. The other, I don't want to run over. Flag me down. This, you know, we've got a sign out there for the, for this variance or this application permit. This property is about 90 yards from the end of Chapel Hill Road. The rest of the people that live on Chapel Hill Road have never seen this sign. And Chapel Hill Road is 6/10ths of a mile from Brant Point to Lakeshore Drive, and we need to get the neighborhood together to get everybody looking at this and see what they feel like is an appropriate number of additions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Lee Scantling? Please state your name, address. You have three minutes.
Lee Scantling. I live in 300 block of Chapel Hill, which is the area y'all are talking about. Daniel Brown has really cleaned the area up. It looks like a community, a small community there now, and I feel like the nine tiny homes would be a good addition, you know? More people to enjoy it. So that's just what I feel.
Thank you very much. At this time, the public portion to this application has been closed. Commissioners, this is our time to speak amongst ourselves. Questions, comments, concerns?
I don't really have any.
Okay.
I've been out there twice, and I rode through, I went in the daytime and looked at the cottages, which I saw the new cottages, and then I saw the old ones. I guess those are the old ones that were already there. And did he build the new ones, or the new ones somebody else built?
I'm not aware of any new construction.
Some of them look newer than the older ones.
Been remodeled.
They were remodeled?
Remodeled, okay.
Oh, okay, because some look different, trust me, than the other ones. But the complaint is the new ones added in with the old ones, the nine new ones. Are there major concern of the people that live further out? Not those people just right in that area. You know, when you drive down...
I understand what your concern is. I'm not certain if, who has, I mean, we can't, if they're not here to tell us, we can't really, you know, add their comments.
Because you know, you go down, and you drive right here, and then there's the other, and then you drive around, and you, so who's the complainant?
Well, we heard two of them tonight.
Yes, and how close in proximity are they to the cottages?
I can't tell you that.
I know. That, you know, when I went, like, both times, in my concern, I mean, I was like, why is the...
Yeah.
Daniel, could I ask you a couple of questions? How do you define long-term rental? What's a long-term rental? When people move in there, what kind of lease do they sign?
All of these will be, all of the ones that are currently there, and these will all be 12-month leases. Yes, sir.
What's your criteria for vetting people that move in there?
So we've been doing this for 15 years. We run local criminal checks. We run national criminal checks. We use tenant data to run a check, which is a service we pay for. We also run through the Garland County Sheriff's Department, not just, we see what, we pull their entire criminal report of what they've been charged with. We do a credit check on them. We do a rental reference and a job reference, and then personal references. We are, we've had this unit for about three years, and to my knowledge, at least for me, I've never had one complaint from a neighbor about the current tenants. And we've got, I think, 17 units there right now, no complaints.
What's your criteria for rejecting an applicant?
Of course, there's no discrimination.
Yeah, I would like to terminate this discussion. We have federal requirements on nondiscrimination and fair housing, and I do not want to get into this discussion.
Thank you. Thank you.
How big is the cottage? How many rooms?
Two-bedroom, two-bath. And these will not be prefab. These are all stick-built. They will be built, we've already ordered Pella windows from Kentucky. I mean, these will be very high-end. This will be over a million-dollar project. These will be very high-end units. The target rent as of right now, which seems to be going up every day, is 1,600 a month. We've actually got two deposits already paid on two of them, and we haven't even got approval yet. But 1,600 a month is the target rent amount, and they will be very high-end units.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Erickson?
What we are voting on here has really nothing to do about the houses that are proposed. We are voting on a zoning change, correct?
We're, we're voting on whether to allow additional units to be built on the site.
In a subdivisional space instead of a rural space, right?
It's not a subdivision. It's a large-scale development plan. And I know you saw in the packet what the proposed layout of that is, where the new homes would be constructed, where the existing homes are, the proposed new parking, the landscaping, and so on.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. At this time, are we ready to call roll?
I'm ready if you're ready.
Let's go for it.
Motion to approve with nine conditions. Gurkey?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approve.
Vow?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Hobby?
Approve, thank you very much. The next item of business is item number five. Director Selman, will you please introduce item number five? Thank you.
Item number five is application RZ 23130, a zone change request application from R1 to R2 for property located at 136 and 140 Wayne Place.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not necessarily mean that you're in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number five?
A move that we approve item number five?
So moved. Oh, second.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number five?
Thank you. Applicant is Mr. Jonathan Martin. He is requesting R2 suburban residential zoning on approximately 1.35 acres of land on Wayne Place, generally west of Honeycutt and Chattanooga Streets. The subject property is currently zoned R1 rural residential. It has a future land use classification of residential suburban, and is in Board of Directors, District Number One. Surrounding property zoning is entirely residential. To the north, it's R2. To the east, it's R1 and M1 light manufacturing. To the northeast, on the south, rural residential, R1, and on the west, the same. Surrounding land use is as follows. On the north, undeveloped woodlands. To the east, single-family residential. To the south, undeveloped lands. And to the west, single-family residential. This is property that contains two single-family homes, neither of which can be conveyed independently or further subdivided because of the one-acre minimum lot size requirement that is associated with R1 zoning. The two single-family residences on the site are currently limited to rental occupancy, with one home constructed in 1925 and one around 1972. Both residences are separately metered, have adequate off-street parking in front on the public street called Wayne Place. The R1 zoning requires a minimum of one acre per parcel. Current parcel is only 1.35 acres, which means that further division under the current classification is not possible. An amendment to R2, also a single-family zone, would allow division of the property as the required minimum parcel would be reduced to 1,200 square feet. The proposed use of the property would remain single-family with the new zone if approved. In addition, a zone change would allow the separation and conveyance of the residences and potentially allow for a third buildable lot, increasing the possibility for a new home in the area. As proposed and is currently situated, the subject property would be consistent and conforming to R2 zoning regulations. A change to R2 would be compatible with surrounding uses, primarily single-family, both the development and zoning. It implements an approved city plan. It responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions in that the R1 zone contemplates agricultural use, of which there is no longer meaningful use in the subject R1 zone area, and fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned. Would increase the possibility of additional single-family on the site. The future land use plan map amendment section of the code reads if the proposed amendments are not consistent with the future land... are not consistent with the future land use plan, then planning commission shall consider and adopt any necessary changes." The subject property has a future land use plan map classification of residential suburban, which is compatible with the requested R2 suburban residential zoning. The staff finding is that the applicant has successfully demonstrated that the standards for favorable consideration are met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. And the recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property R2 suburban residential because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, is consistent with the future land use plan map, and the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 11E. And a reminder, this is a recommendation. Tonight, the decision is a recommendation to the Board of Directors and the final decision will be made by the Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and let us know if there's anything you would like to add?
Ladies and gentlemen, good to see you all and appreciate your consideration. I'm Jonathan Martin. I'm the attorney for the property owners Eddie and Lisa Slick. And as the report pretty well spells out everything, but...
We need your address. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. 1401 Malvern Avenue, Suite 160. I got ahead of myself. This property and that R1 section over off of Spring Street is somewhat, that's an area that probably needs a lot of cleanup. As we noted in our application, that in addition to the subject properties, there are at least 10 other non-conforming properties that are smaller than the required minimum for R1. You know, the R1 section of the code, like she said, contemplates agricultural use and to preserve kind of the agricultural nature, and there's just not any of that really anymore. This property is unique in the fact that it was carved off of a larger piece about a year ago. And by having two residences on one parcel that now is small enough that you can't further subdivide in R1, they're stuck with either having to convey this to another landlord, essentially, that's going to have two rental properties. And what they're seeking to do is eventually enable this for these residences to be conveyed independently and possibly add a third lot in there as well. And there is enough square footage, the 12,000-square-foot minimum for R2 zoning. There's plenty of that for this here. Even if they divided into three lots, they're still going to be over a third of an acre each. In fact, it'd be around .45 or so for those lots if they're properly divided. There's already a good city water main there. There's good sewer frontage. It meets all the other requirements of R2, other than the fact that this is R1. And right across the street is R2. Right across the corner is the light manufacturing. So we feel like this property is ready to take that next step up and enable it to eventually be further thoughtfully developed, you know, to the extent that another single-family residence can be added there as well. So, and I've got Mr. Slick here with me tonight. If anybody's got any questions of either one of us, we'll be happy to have you answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody signed up on this application? Very good. At this time, the public portion to this application is closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Then we will just go straight to the roll call. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll on motion to approve item number five?
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is item number six. Director Selman, please introduce this item.
Thank you. Item number six is rezone number 23-134. This is a zone change request from R4 to CTR for lots three to six in Block One of Wyatt's subdivision located at approximately 115 Wind Street.
Very good. Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets this matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not necessarily mean that you're in favor of this application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number six?
Make a motion to approve item six?
Second.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, please present the staff report on item number six.
Thank you. The applicant is Dr. Carlotta Wells, representing property owner, Southwest Arkansas Foot and Ankle Center. She is requesting CTR commercial transitional, commercial transitional district zoning on approximately .62 acres of land, generally located at 115 Wind Street. The subject properties are currently zoned R4 medium-high density residential and have a future land use classification of medium-high. They are located in Board of Directors, District Number Three. The properties are partially developed. Lot Five is developed with a single-family residence while lots three, four, and six are vacant. This property is located directly across Wind Street from the Mallory Wyatt Shopping Center and is one property away from the Albert Pike Starbucks located to the north. Surrounding property zoning to the north is medium-high density residential, R4. To the east is C2 General Business District and R4. To the south is R4 and to the west is C2 General Business District. Surrounding land uses are, to the north, single-family residential; to the east, undeveloped woodland and multifamily apartment complex; to the south, single-family residential; and to the west, commercial shopping center. The application includes a narrative in support of the request and lists several points in favor of this zone change according to the applicant. Her point number one is titled "Compatible Surrounding Area," in which she states, "The proposed site is near existing commercial areas. This ensures that the proposed area will be well-integrated into the surrounding infrastructure, creating more cohesive planning strategy and avoiding zoning conflicts." Narrative point number one outlines how this zone change request demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning. Hot Springs Code states in part in Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 49. CTR, Commercial Transitional, is a district that promotes infill development in existing neighborhoods of the city. It also encourages innovative adaptive reuse projects. In order to protect neighborhood stability, the Planning Commission carefully monitors development carried out in this district. The district exists to achieve the plan objectives of promoting positive development and redevelopment of mature areas of the city. Developments carried out in the district should promote the neighborhood or village image of the area. To this end, it is important that developments carried out in the district are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area. This property is adjacent to C2 General Business and is in close proximity to a commercial shopping center, restaurants, convenience store, bank, and retail, as well as single and multifamily residential uses. Three of the lots are vacant and are candidates for infill development in this existing neighborhood. And as the code tells us, the CTR Commercial Transition Zone is intended for mature areas as a transition between residential and commercial, which this site certainly exhibits those characteristics. These facts enable Planning Commission to find that the zone change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, is consistent with zoning objectives as required by Hot Springs Code 16 to 11E. And if the zone change to CTR is approved, the full range of permitted unconditional uses would be possible in accordance with Hot Springs Code Table of Permitted Uses. The future land use designation of commercial enclave would give the subject property an appropriate future land use classification and would be consistent with nearby commercially-zoned properties in the 1,800 block of West St. Louis. Recommendation regarding the future land use plan map is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the future land use plan map designating the subject property commercial enclave. With regard to the findings on the zone change request, finding is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration are met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending that the Board of Directors, that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. Should CTR zoning be established, any non-residential use on the subject property would require future conditional use application and site development plan consideration by Planning Commission. The recommendation on the zone change is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property CTR Commercial Transitional District because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and that the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 11E. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name, your address for the record, and do you have anything you would like to add?
Hi, I'm Carlotta Wells, 1132, well, the office is at 1132 Malvern Avenue here in Hot Springs. I happened upon this little house and over time it was destroyed by these thousand-year-old trees in adjacent lots. So I ended up acquiring those lots so that when I eventually built this house up, that those trees wouldn't again destroy the property. So I happened upon the lots next to it and want to develop those as well. And I really wanted to provide housing for elderly in some sort of residential facility. And so I need some type of commercial zoning and so that's why I'm here today.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for our applicant?
Will it be a duplex or apartment?
There are single homes.
Okay.
One is already, well, the one is already built and there's a second one in the midst of being built right now.
Is that at address 115?
115 and then 1113 is in the process of being built.
So 115 is, the brick house is already there?
No, that's...
It's the white.
The White House.
Is someone already living there?
No.
Okay. And how many houses will you?
It'll be three, three or four.
Wow.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm assuming we don't have anybody signed up? Okay. There's nobody here, but had to ask. At this time, the public portion to this application is now closed. Commissioners, do we have any questions, concerns, comments that we would like to talk amongst ourselves?
I don't.
All right. Then let's go straight for the roll call. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll on a motion to approve item number six with staff reports and findings?
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is a recommendation that will go to the Board of Directors for a final decision. They will consider it on October 3rd at 6:00 PM in this room. Please be present, yes.
Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is the Director's Report.
Yes, busy week. We have a first draft of the housing strategy, which is already on its way back to the consultant for some modifications. Before it's ready for primetime, we want to get it all spiffed up for you. And as soon as we get a draft that is a public draft, we will make sure that you get a copy and that you are involved in the public review of that document. And we're very excited about this. The Board has expressed their commitment to taking action to begin to make it possible for us to have more housing and more housing that is affordable for people. So, we're not just talking about affordable housing, we're talking about all kinds of housing so that people who want to live in Hot Springs can find a home in Hot Springs. The second thing is our code FORWARD, which implements Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan, Forward Hot Springs 2040. We also have a very preliminary draft of that, which we will begin reviewing tomorrow. We finished up with the housing strategy this morning and we will be starting the code tomorrow morning. So, again, as soon as we have a public draft, you will see that and you will be actively involved in the review of that document before it goes for approval anywhere. So, a lot of progress in the last week and a half and more to come. And I look forward to working with you on both of those documents. They're big.
Very exciting.
They're, they are exciting.
Very exciting.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any other business?
Director Selman, I'd just like to ask, I may be, I may be the only one experiencing this, but whenever I look through the maps sometimes and some of the applications, it would be useful, I think, to have a context map of land use designation.
Okay, I thought we had that.
There should be one.
Rick showed it to us one time.
Can we?
No, I mean, for the, you know, for the each application.
For each application, right?
Okay, so we...
Yes.
So, instead of just the zoning, also the land uses?
I think that would be, at least it's something that I always wonder about whenever I see these.
Okay.
Again, I don't want to create too much work, but if that's not something that'll be a killer, then it would be...
I think we can make that happen.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's, Bart, that's a great idea. Just like the numbering on the map, so you're just knocking them out of the park these days. No, but I think it would be nice for those that are in the audience to be able to see that as well.
Yeah.
Visual learners, visual teachers, this is very visual. All right, any other business? We will be adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Mine, too. I live fourth.
I have a personal, a personal ask.